Fred, I want to welcome everyone to the Town of Fairfax Planning Commission hearing, July 28th, 2022. Some of you may realize we had some technical difficulties. For those participating virtually, you can join the Zoom webinar and use the raised hand feature to provide verbal public comment. On Zoom, the webinar ID is... Pamela?
89598853602 is the webinar ID. And today, we have a very special trick where we may ask you to put in a passcode. That passcode would be 445657. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Okay, I got in.
Oh, good.
Technology.
That's Phil. And you can also join the webinar by phone by dialing 1-669-900-6833, or 1-346-2487799, and use the webinar ID that Pamela just gave you. So can we have a call to order, a roll call?
Green? We can see you waving. You have to turn your mic on, though, and respond.
Here.
Yep. Green? Did you say here? Oh, okay. Is there Newton?
Here.
Green is here. Thank you.
Kelly?
Here.
Jansen?
Yeah.
Swift?
Here.
And Fergoso is absent.
And now for the approval of the agenda. And I had something to add to the agenda since we have a new interim planning director. We normally with our planning director have a planning director comments item on the agenda, so I wanted to put that back in just in case our planning director wanted to make any comments or statements. So I'd like to add that after the minutes, after item four. And does anyone else have any changes to the agenda?
No, but I'll move to approve the agenda with that additional item added.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, and I'm going to call the roll. Green?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
So I'm going to read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. So, public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not on tonight's agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission, must do so by email or in person via Zoom or in the audience in the manner described above. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the commission chair. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings in order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view. Members of the audience should limit presentation to three minutes, provide their comments by email as described above, state views and concerns succinctly, and submit any new documents to the planning staff first via email to be entered into the record. So is there any public comments at this time?
I do see a hand in our virtual audience from Frank Egger.
Frank?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can you speak a little louder, please?
You know, I can't tell if I'm online or not. Can you hear me? Okay, okay. Just what I noticed is Fairfax no longer requires a notice of a project on the front of a property anymore. And I was just wondering, there's a property at 276 Cascade Drive that the whole has been gutted. It's a... And there's no notice as to how, what kind of a project it is. At one time Fairfax required, you know, a notice be posted on the front of the property that advised people what work was being performed there. But I guess Fairfax doesn't require that anymore. I don't know when we stopped that.
I can just respond to that. That house, we've red-tagged it and stopped them. They did all that without any permits. And so they've been advised that they have to go through the HRD process, but they did all that without any permit. So that's what's happening at 276 Cascade.
Any other comments from the public?
I see no other hands at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close public comments. Next is consent calendar. There are no items on the consent calendar, so we'll go to our first public hearing item. Ten Court Lane, application 22-12, request for a conditional use permit, minimum and combined side setback variances, and a design review permit for 50% remodel expansion of an existing 1,460 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-family residence into a 1,543 square foot, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bathroom, single-family residence, and rebuild of an existing 415 square foot, two-car garage in place. Can we have the staff report, please?
So that sort of summarizes the basic parameters of the project and a few more project details. So, as Cindy mentioned, approximately, you know, over 50% of the existing home would be remodeled. And that includes a new 83 square foot addition to the bedroom at the rear of the home, and also a small addition on the side of the house, on the kitchen, on an interior face, on a wall that faces an interior side of the yard. So also proposed is some interior work involving, they would, the applicants are proposing to remove the existing fireplace and chimney, and they would renovate the inside of the home and reconfigure all the bedrooms and sort of the back portion of the house that has the dining room, kitchen, and laundry area. A new roof is proposed over the, sort of the back portion of the house. And it would be slightly higher than the roof that's there, the existing roof. So the new roof would be about one and a half inches higher than the existing roof, which is 11 feet, seven inches. Also, exterior changes involve relocating the front entry stairs. So currently, they're at the front of the house, and the proposal is to move them to the side of the house at the front. And a wooden deck is proposed off of the bedroom addition at the rear of the home. Other changes include all-new, energy-efficient windows. Some of these windows would be slightly larger than the existing windows of the home, but the largest windows are proposed on a wall that faces the interior of the lot. The other window changes are pretty slight. One new window is proposed on the north side of the home, but it's up high, a small bathroom-type window. New fiber cement shingle exterior siding would replace the existing wood horizontal siding. And as Cindy mentioned, the existing garage is going to be rebuilt in place. Currently, the garage has a flat roof, and it tops out at nine feet. The proposal is to change the roof so that the garage would have the same footprint, square footage, 415 square feet. The roof would be sloped now, well, the center ridge line, and the new roof would be about 11 feet, four and a half inches high. There's also a pergola attached to the rear of the garage that is going to be rebuilt, mostly in place. However, I guess the existing roof of the pergola sort of extends over into the neighbor's yard on Eight Court Lane. So this proposal, the rebuild, rebuilding of that pergola would eliminate that encroachment, and then the roof line would end at the property boundary. So the garage and pergola would be about one foot from that side property line, and then the roof lines would extend to the property line. Also, let's see. There are also some new swing doors proposed for the garage, too, that would be in the front and one on a side of the garage. And there are several dark sky compliant LED light fixtures that are proposed. Those would be all at the exterior entrances of the building, the house and the garage. And the siding would be painted a light green, and the trim and gutters, downspouts, that would be dark brown. The window frames would be dark brown. And also, there are already green building measures that are included. And I will, I will let the applicant speak to those because they've, they'll do a better job than I could. And I don't want to take up too much time here. And two trees are proposed for removal, one Douglas fir and a crabapple. And those both received a recommendation for removal by the tree committee. So, and the existing lot is sort of irregularly shaped. It's pretty flat, however, it does slope down at the back towards San and Selmo Creek. And San and Selmo Creek forms the property boundary at the back of the property. And the site is in an AE flood zone, but the town did receive an elevation certificate that indicated that all the buildings on the site and the proposed addition would be right, would be above the flood elevation. So there are some discretionary approvals required. A conditional use permit, a minimum, and combined side yard setback variance, and a design review permit. So the conditional use permit is required because the property does not meet the minimum with requirement along the frontage based on its slope. So regarding that, so the conditional use permit. The 83 square foot addition is a pretty minimal expansion of the house to the back. And the addition on the, in the kitchen is facing an interior yard. The roof of the garage would change. The height's going to increase, but the resulting garage would be rebuilt in the same location and the same square footage. The pergola would be reconfigured to be entirely on the project property. And the project building height wouldn't exceed the 28 and a half foot height limit allowed in the zoning district. So the project would maintain a similar size and floor area to other properties in the neighborhood. It would also comply with the regulations of the underlying zoning district with the exception of the combined setback, side setbacks. And it would require, it would provide the required onsite parking, with install sprinklers and a new type A fire-rated roof, and it would include a number of green building measures. So regarding the minimum and combined side setback variance, so the portion of the house where the new addition would occur at the rear is already about half a foot into the five, minimum five-foot side setback. And then the garage is already four feet into the setback on the other side of the property. So the house and the garage don't meet the minimum side setbacks, and they don't meet the combined side setbacks. So the addition to to the house is, and the garage, wouldn't, would not, you know, approach into the setbacks anymore than the property already does. So they wouldn't decrease the setbacks below the ones that are currently maintained by the existing structures. And the reconfiguration of the pergola is actually kind of beneficial because they would be taking part of the roof that's approaching into their neighbor's property out of the property and would meet the property boundary. And so there are several features about the property itself that make it kind of hard to comply with those setback requirements. In particular, it's the shape of it. It's sort of like a triangle, or if you remember geometry, it's sort of like a trapezoidal shape. And so they have a creek at the rear, and that, those two things at the end of the cul-de-sac make it difficult to move the garage further away from the side property boundary. They also would like to maintain a space between the house and the garage so they can get large equipment through to do creek work because they went through a large creek restoration project a few years ago that they'd like to keep up on. And so regarding the design review, it requires a design review permit because it's a substantial remodel. And the addition, as I mentioned earlier, it's kind of minimal. It's a minor extension of the existing footprint. And the proposed changes would maintain the historic character and architectural style of the home. The new roof line at the back of the house would be in the center, so it'd be center of the roof line. So let's see. And then all the lighting proposed is dark sky rated, and replacing the flat-roofed garage with a sloped garage would, the garage would now match, the roof would match the roof of the existing home. So the changes being proposed will not substantially alter the style of the home. And we didn't really receive any comments from any other agencies about this project other than standard conditions of approval. The only comments with, or the only agency that provided us with specific conditions was the fire department, and that was just that fire sprinklers be installed, which is actually kind of standard for this type of project. So that concludes the staff report. The recommendation is to approve the application 2212 by adopting the attached resolution 202216 that sets forth the findings and conditions of project approval.
Do the chair one moment, please, if you'll forgive me. Before we start deliberations, I forgot to hit the record button in the beginning of the meeting, so we're just going to do that real quickly now.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions for staff? Commissioner Newton?
Thanks. Thanks. Vice Chair Swift. I was just looking at a document in the plans by SWIFT Engineering on page nine of 14. It's the Boundary and Topographic Survey that accompanies the drawings. And I really appreciate what you were saying about the shape of the, of the site. I'm just really curious as to why we haven't mentioned the creek setback at all in your report. Do you have anything to say about it? You know, when I look at 17040040, it talks about a minimum setback from the creek from the top of the bank of, let me see if I can get this language, 20 feet or two times the average depth of the bank, whichever is greater. And there's language about, you know, not putting buildings, structures, or swimming pools there. And then there's language about, you know, when you're replacing something that does not increase the height with length or configuration of the original structure. And even though we're talking about a very small increase, when I look at this SWIFT engineering plan, what I see is a reference to 34-foot setback to creek, and there's a line there. But it doesn't appear to be aligned to the top of the bank. And so I, I'm getting a little confused as to, first, why we haven't mentioned anything about the creek setback requirements in the staff report? Because I think even if it, you know, if this is correct, that it's not actually impinging into that setback. That would have been, I think, a good thing to note, and maybe even include an aware ask clause. But I just have general questions about whether that line in that plan reflects our ordinance. And then, in trying to sort of dig a little deeper, I found a fact sheet on our website that I thought didn't even reflect the ordinance language. So I've got a bunch of questions about the creek setback for this one.
Cara, can you move the microphone closer to you? Yeah.
So if I understand you, I, let me, let me try to say what I, I'm not sure I understand. So you're one, so the first thing I think I do understand is why wasn't the creek setback mentioned in the staff report? That was an oversight. The project does not approach into the creek setback. So out of, so since it wasn't an issue, I didn't mention it, but I, you know, that was an oversight on my part. The creek setback is shown on the site plan. It's just, it's shown as the, there's a dashed line that kind of goes around the house. That's this, that denotes all the setbacks. And if you look at the, if you look at the survey, you can see setback to creek called out along a dashed line. And in there, you can kind of see the creek setbacks and the measurements. Yeah.
Yes, in fact, I can see those, but when I look at the ordinance, right, 1704040, it says that you can't construct something closer to the top of the stream bank. And the 34-foot line that I see on that map looks like it goes not to the top of the bank, but to the old middle of the stream. And they're saying that the stream seems to have changed, or maybe there was an error. But I could be mistaken. I am often in these, looking at these plans. So I apologize if I'm not reading it correctly.
No, I don't know if this is going to help or make it worse, but I don't know if you remember that this project did get a creek setback variance to rebuild the barn on the property. And I'm not sure why they've shown that 34 feet that way, but we made sure we checked against the engineering plans. We made sure that the creek setback that was shown when they did get a creek setback for the rebuilding of the barn matched this new submittal. And they actually had to redesign the project slightly to get the new construction, the addition, out of the creek setback. So I'm not sure why they have that line going to the center of the creek, but where they have it shown on the plans matches what an engineer determined for the barn reconstruction, the location. They did not need a creek setback variance. It matches the, it matches the location that was determined, a creek setback line that was determined by the engineer for the barn project, and it was reviewed by our engineer at that time. And when they first submitted, they had incorrectly shown the creek setback line, and they had to revise it. And I don't know what they're trying to say with that 34 feet, but they might be able to address that later. Yeah, usually what they do is they take comments from all the commissioners, and then you'll have a chance to... So it's accurate. I don't know why, what the 34 means, but the line shown, the setback line shown on the site plan and on that engineering page, the location is correct. And it was checked by a town engineer.
Linda, question on that. On the 2018 application that came for the barn work, the creek setback variance, was that for the entire property or just the work around the barn?
It was just to rebuild the barn in its existing location. Yeah, which was in the creek setback. I don't know if that, you know, the original code read 20 feet back from the, from the center of the creek. And I don't know if someone's reading a really old code that said the creek setback was from the center of the creek. It's been, the setback's been from the top of the creek bank for a long time now. But when, originally, when I started here, it was 20 feet or twice the depth of the bank from the center line. I think the owner might be able to shed some light on that, too, so.
Commissioner Newton, did you have any other questions?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? I had a comment when we get to a reso that we didn't include the tree permit in the reso, so just a note on that, that it doesn't address that. Seeing no other commissioner questions, can we have the applicant come up to the podium if they choose to speak to their application and then maybe address any questions from the commission? You could come on, come on up to the... And if you push the button, yeah, thanks.
Great, thank you very much. So let me, I'm going to do a share on Zoom so everybody can, can see what I've got here. And, oh, we're disabled for that. Is it possible to turn that on, or is there a plug-in here, maybe? That's me. Share.
And I'm sorry, but you're Alex, correct?
I guess so.
Thanks.
I should introduce myself, Alex Shuldiner. Great, thanks so much for, for being able to share here tonight. There we are. So this is the, let me get rid of this. There we go. So this is the location, a bit faint here on the screen, but it's a cul-de-sac off of Dominga Ave, so a very short walk from where we are today. And as you can see here, there's, there is this creek here at the back of the property. And I'll start with addressing the question that you just raised, Commissioner, about Commissioner Newton, about the setback. What you're seeing here on the left is the first document you mentioned. It's the SWIFT survey. So this was the, one of the very first pieces of work we had done, which we had done for the original project to address all of that complexity down there on the left of the diagram with the serious erosion issues we are having that were threatening the building at the bottom of the diagram down here. And at that time, we were told to correct the setback to the creek line, which was drawn, as you noted, according to these instructions, and instead to produce a setback that, that is to this line here. So we are using the, the setback that was agreed upon in the course of the previous application to the town, which is not to say that anything in that application gives us a right to build now anything new in the setback. It's just, this is now the official line that we are supposed to be working to. So there's, that's a discrepancy in the documents. And indeed, if we go by the original line, you can see that part of the existing house inside that blue circle or that blue oval to the left is in the creek setback. Whereas if you draw it correctly, even the house, or draw it as the town has asked us to, the house extension comes right up to that line. And indeed, we, we, we designed it for exactly that reason, to stay out of the creek setback as defined by the town. The house comes up to that line, but does not extend into it, with the exception of a little bit of a roof eve that, that you can see as a dotted line going over it. But, but no new construction into that space on the footprint of the ground. Commissioner Newton, does that answer, does that help clarify that, that first question?
No, I'm afraid I'm still slightly lost here. On the right side of the screen, what is the line that you were instructed you needed to measure twenty feet from?
Let me see. Here's my cursor. So you'll see, there's a line here which is showing the sort of the long and then two short dashes.
Yes.
This represents the setback here running up quite close to the, the revised footprint of the house.
And that is twenty feet from the setback or from the top of the bank line that was involved in the, in the barn restoration?
Yes, that's the, that is the line as defined with the guidance from planning and the town engineer as part of the permitting process and, and the JARPA process for the creek restoration project that we did some years ago.
All right, I'm just trying to get an actual distance, you know, like twenty feet or, you know, in the, in the other one, it says thirty-four feet.
So, yes, so, so we have communications with the, uh, planning, the planning office that brings up a bunch of emails and the whole, the whole sort of history of how that line was determined. It's rather a lot to go through in this meeting, but I think, you know, maybe we can pull that up and send that along.
Okay.
Something like that. But this has been pretty exhaustively reviewed.
All right. So what you're saying, and I'm just, I apologize for
No, it's complicated.
Get my brain around this. So what you're saying is that the line on the right, with the long line and the two dashes, is just the line you were provided. There's no reference line other than that line for the, the creek setback that you will provide.
That is the definitive creek setback line. That's right. And there is a logic to it. That is explained in a series of emails that I think Linda and, and we and Gary Roth worked through back at that time, in which we were instructed to, to adhere to for this project as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great. Any other questions about the creek setback? It, it is the thorniest thing about the property, so I, I understand concerns or confusion about that. If not, I'll just move on to a couple of other sort of pictures to help you visualize what's going on with the project and what we're trying to do. We purchased this property in two thousand thirteen in a state of, of neglect. All of the proper, all of the barns, or sorry, all of the, the, the buildings on the property were suffering from a lack of maintenance. There were very serious erosion issues back on the creek. So over the years since then, we have done sort of the work we had to do. The roof starts to leak. Well, we've got to repair the, the roof. The, the, we were worried about the, in the event of the earthquake, the whole house might slide off its foundation. So we did work to pin it to the, to its foundation. So there's been a variety of that sort of work that we've done. But unfortunately, all of our attention had to go to the very complex and expensive creek restoration of some eighteen or twenty feet or something that we had to, to restore along the creek then. So, so that took our, our attention, that and, and, and saving the barn from rolling down into the creek. But we're, we're now ready to deal with the house and the, the house and the garage. So on the outside of the house, this is not catching up very well. What's going on? On the outside of the house, huh, it's not forwarding. Yes, there we go. So a lot, it's, it's a very old house. It's about a hundred years old. It's, it's not sealed in any way against air movement, and we have discovered that much to our regret in the heavy smoke incidents that we've had in the past few years. It's certainly not going to be resistant to embers. These flat roofs are basically big cups that would do nothing but catch a lot of that sort of material. The eaves are in no way protected against that. As you can see in this picture, there are plantings against the house. The chimney is in a poor state of repair. In fact, is, is leaning to a certain degree. So all of these issues we want to fix by addressing the exterior envelope of the house, by replacing it with Class A materials on the sides and the top and on, you know, sealing it up properly so that we have a a more energy efficient and healthy home to live in. On the inside of the house, and it may be a bit slow to update again, we have, of course, the usual mix of knob and tube and who knows what coming through the pipes and, you know, a hundred years of this and that. Everything in the house is gas powered, which is lovely during a PG&E power outage. We'll, we'll miss that sort of capability. It stopped sharing for some reason, but at any rate, with or without the photos, you can imagine the interior is, is what you see in a lot of these houses, sort of a bit slapshot. Interiors sort of partially finished, finishes in a poor state of repair after, after a century of use or, or somewhat less in the back of the house, which, which is newer extensions. The house has been extended twice, I believe, and, and in both cases, it was just sort of a chunk was added on, and there's been no attempt to rationalize the interior flow. So it's, it's very inefficient the way it's laid out. So with the rebuild, we will make it a fully electric house. We will update it with proper modern finishes, low VOC and, you know, all of the, all of the green building requirements will be met, and the floor plan will now be properly integrated. The garage and it's, it's unfortunate, I can't show the picture of this, but suffice to say you can see right through it. It's, you know, the siding is there, there are gaps throughout. The roof leaks badly, and we've been informed is, is not really even repairable in the state that it's in. The doors don't shut properly. You can't secure it against vermin. You can't secure it against theft. So it's a very, very limited use and, and doesn't seem to be worth saving. The driveway in front of it's cracked, so, so I'll have to pour new concrete anyway. So the proposal then is to build a secured garage with two internal parking spaces with electric charging, with a peaked roof to, to help keep water and fire off of it, and with a permeable driveway instead of the, the massive concrete that's in front of it today. I did have a picture and maybe I'll just try to share again, or am I out of the Zoom? Let me try sharing one more time because it would be good to see this. Yeah. Okay. So hopefully this will come up, but this helps to explain the, if it does share, there we go. So this picture here, and I don't know, maybe we can move the, the, out of the way because you'll see the edge of the garage is there to the right. It's covered up by the speaker view there, the, those videos of me and other people there. But there we go. So you see the sort of end of the garage or the edge, the side of the garage there on the blue arrow to the right. And you can see that this sort of pergola type structure, that seems too dignified a word to use for it. But at any rate, the thing that's behind the garage extends, you know, unnecessarily a few feet beyond it to the side. So the idea is, yes, rebuild the garage. Yes, it's useful to have a covered space behind it, and that terrain behind the garage has already been gravelled over, so it's, it's already been disturbed, but let's keep this in line with the garage and, and move that back so that this thing is not, is not encroaching on the neighbor. So we'll end up with improved views from the neighbor's side. There'll be a clean alley to the left of the, of the garage. So that'll be, that'll be an improvement. And I think all the neighbors, you've, you've seen the letters from the neighbors voicing their support for that. And that's, that's it. That's all I had to, any questions on any of that material? So just some of the other pictures. The state of the garage, the state of the interior. Any questions?
Commissioner Green?
I'm just wondering if you've done any kind of a shadow study or solar study, a solar, I don't see, in the plans, anyway, I don't see a lot of trees over the roof. So I was just wondering, the possibility.
We did, we did, we've had people out to look at it and there, the first time we had somebody out, there were two very large trees, which we ended up taking down because they were, they were quite, of a quite advanced age, and we were advised by an arborist they needed to go. That will surely have improved the, the south, the, the late day sun, sunbearance on the house. But the removal of the other Doug fir that is planned as part of this project, should I, I'm hoping will now produce enough sunlight on the house that, that solar will be worthwhile. We've been using, you know, the deep green for years now. So, you know, we figure we're renewable and if we can make a case for, for getting solar on the house, we'll, we'll do that. But our goal is to take the tree down and then have another study done to show us, you know, if that's really a smart thing, if that's a cost efficient thing to do or not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So now I'm gonna open it up for public comment on this application.
We did have a hand raised previously that's down. Oh, it's back up again. Sarah?
Um, for someone, and I can't get my video up working, my apologies. Hopefully you can hear me. I first wanted to just address Commissioner Newton, you're asking about the setback and on the architectural, sorry, I am the designer on this project. So, you know, my drawing that I did of the set of the site plan, I do call out the creek setback, the creek setback is twenty-two feet from the top of bank, just so you know. And that was based, oh, I can start my video now. Thank you. There we go. Hi. So just so you know, twenty-two feet is what was determined back at the time that Alec and Talia did the barn rebuilt. And so that's called out on the drawings. And as they both, as I mentioned, that's been gone over with, you know, a fine tooth comb, and it seems that this design is not in the creek setback, just so you know. And I think Alec did a great job of pointing out how much this project will help both health, safety, neighborhood, and Fairfax by doing this. Something I can't mention enough are the limitations of the site because of the shape of the property, as well as how much we're really just keeping within the existing conditions of the property. It was built, as Alec mentioned, over a hundred years ago. And where the setbacks, it's a minor three and a half foot addition off the back, and it's actually less of encroachment into the setback than what exists because of the angle of the building. So I, I don't think we're making conditions any worse. If anything, we are trying to improve the conditions while still keeping the character of the building and access to the site. So thank you.
Can I ask a question for Sarah?
Ma'am.
When you say that, are you referring to a specific drawing with the twenty-two foot line, or are you just saying in general?
No, I, I actually put it on the drawing on sheets. A one point one and A one point two of the architectural set. It is called out.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it, I'll close public comment and I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Green?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Chair. This is one of those projects that's rare for me that I didn't have any concerns, comments. I, I'm really happy. I just want to make the comment that I'm very happy the owners are upgrading another derelict property, and I always have expressed, I think that's wonderful when you can upgrade a derelict property. So I'm kind of for the project. I don't have any issues with it. There's one issue with a condition that Cindy, you mentioned earlier, Commissioner. And I think that it's a great project. That's, that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Any other commissioner?
Uh, yeah, I'd like just to concur with, with the previous comments. I think it's cleverly done within the extreme constraints, so it will be a lot better than it was before.
Commissioner Newton?
Thanks. I have no problems with the proposal and the designs. I, I have some concerns with the reso not referencing the stream, the creek setback requirements and finding, or at least just providing a little reference to that and indicating, you know, maybe that it's within the twenty-two foot setback based on the top of the bank decided in the twenty eighteen decision on the barn. So, you know, I would probably want to add something about that to the existing reso. I don't, I, I I will rely on the staff's representation that having gone back and looked through all of that, the twenty-two foot line that Sarah referenced in her drawings, A one and A two is, is, you know, where that setback ought to be. So but I think referencing that will help to make it clear that that is a requirement and that the proposal complies with it. Thanks. Oh, one other thing before Brett, I see your hands up too, but you know, the slides that were being shown, that front door in its horrible state was a thing of beauty to me, just FYI.
Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. And all, all the talk about the setbacks, I'm glad we did sort of dive into it because it is a concern always properties adjacent to the stream. I was actually, in looking at the drawings prior to the meeting, I was actually concerned about the garage and the side setback. Now understanding the width constraint between the two houses and the, the noble will to make sure you have access for machinery to get between the house and the garage to repair the bank if needed. I think that, that all makes sense to me, and I'm generally in support of the project. It looks great.
Commissioner Green?
Yeah, I know I had my turn, but I, I just want to specifically propose that we mentioned in the reso that the tree permit, so that there needs to be a, a new titled section, I think, in the reso that says something like two trees, you know, what it says in, in the staff report, two trees would be removed, one crabapple tree at the front of the house and one Douglas fir behind the garage because their foliage is less than six feet from the buildings. And mention also that trees with canopies that get closer than six feet need to be trimmed, maintained, required clearance or be removed per the Ross Valley Fire Department. I think at least a mention like that in the reso of a tree permit would be a good idea, and that it was approved by the tree would be a good idea, and that it was approved by the tree committee. And also, I, I second the idea of adding to the reso certainly a mention of the creek setback as Commissioner Newton suggests.
Okay, so as to the tree permit, when we make changes to the reso, and I'm going to ask staff for suggested language on the creek setback per Commissioner Newton's request for this. But as far as the tree permit, tree removal permit, that needs to be added to the title of the reso, as well as the second whereas. And and then the last page under therefore be it resolved, a reference to the tree removal permit. And then we also normally add to the reso a paragraph that says, kind of a standard paragraph, that says, prior to the removal of any trees not approved by the planning commission through this action, the applicant shall secure a tree cutting permit, if required, from the Fairfax Tree Committee prior to removal of any onsite trees subject to a permit under town code chapter 936. So that could, I don't know if you want to add that to the miscellaneous section. Do we have a motion?
I can move to approve resolution number 2022-16 of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 2212 for a conditional use permit, minimum and combined side yard setback variance, design review permit, and tree removal permit for the 50% remodel and 83 square foot expansion of the existing single family residence at 10 Court Lane with the title, second whereas clause, and last paragraph amended to address the tree removal permit in the standard language that Vice Chair Swift read into the record, as well as an additional whereas clause to be added before the findings on the first page, before the conditional use permit findings to reference the the compliance with the creek setback per the top of the bank and 22 foot distance established as part of the commission's approval of the renovation of the barn in 2018. And you just put the ordinance, sorry, the resolution number in there. And, yeah, that's my motion. I'm sticking to it.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Green?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Acting Chair Swift?
Aye. So the resolution is approved. Thank you. There is a 10 day appeal timeframe with a fee. Anyone wishing to appeal this should contact the planning department. Correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
It's like a $650 fee or something like that, right, Linda?
Yeah, it went up from 500 to 650. I think you're correct about that. Yep.
Okay, our next item on tonight's agenda is application 2213, a project that's a 50% remodel and two-story addition to a single family residence. And the action required is the Hill Area Residential Development and Design Review permits. Can we have a staff report, please?
So the project proposes 516 square foot two-story addition to the northeast side of an existing 1,795 square foot two-story, three-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-family dwelling to create a 2,311 square foot, two-story, three-bedroom, three-bathroom, single-family home. So over 50% of the existing home would be remodeled, including reconfiguring both floors. The two-story addition would contain the same amount of square footage on each floor, which would be 258 square feet. The project would also create a new internal front entry foyer and external covered entry porch. Currently, I think the front, the front door, you access the house through the kitchen or something like that. So other improvements consist of replacing the, the second story deck and guardrail on the east side of the home and replacing existing siding and windows on the second floor to match the first floor and creating a new overhang at the dining room door. The proposed paint would match the existing colors, which is sort of a slate gray with white on trim windows and doors. Some dark skies compliant lighting is proposed, not very much. Just at the new front entry porch at the, the second story deck and the new, the eastern side entry, there's a new entry proposed off the, the addition. There are already green building measures included in the project. And the project proposes to infiltrate stormwater from roof downspouts into the soil with a dry well with an overflow to Bay Road. The dry well is proposed northeast of the addition, the proposed addition at the top of an existing cut slope along Bay Road. Project grading would involve approximately 34 cubic yards of cut material. And so, okay. Sorry here. So the Hillary residential development ordinance requires a number of items be supplied to the town for review in, in an effort to understand the project and approve it. So some of these items were requested and were not provided, like the, the location and alignment of the site utilities, grading and erosion control plant plan and it, and drainage calculations. However, the town engineer reviewed the entire body of information provided by the applicant, including the geotechnical and architectural, including the project engineering and architectural plans, the geotechnical report. They did a site visit and after all that, determined that the missing information required by the Hill Area Residential Development Ordinance could be submitted and reviewed as part of the building permit submittal for the project. So the site is pretty large for Fairfax standards. It's 17,740 square feet. So there is an existing two-story accessory structure that was constructed in 1966 with a building permit. And it does extend past the property boundary into the public right of way. But the project does not propose any kind of improvements or they're not going to touch that structure. It's there and it's staying where it is, where it was approved all those years ago. So the area where the addition would occur is, is relatively level on the property, even though it does have an average slope of 32%. So this project requires Hill Area Residential and Design Review permits. And regarding the Hill Area Residential Development Permit, the project is not going to remove or eliminate any natural topographic features from the site. As I mentioned, it's relatively flat where the addition would go. There's a minor amount of excavation. It's a total of 34 cubic yards. The grading and drainage plan doesn't indicate what's going to happen with the excess soil. So we included a resolution, or sorry, we included a condition in the resolution that project, let me just say that, a condition of project, okay, require, okay. So requiring the grading and drainage plan to be updated to indicate whether the spoils will be removed or reused on the site. And that would need to occur prior to the issuance of building permits. So the town engineer did note that the, the location of the proposed dry well could decrease stability and lead to erosion from seepage or slopping of the cut. So the town engineer recommended that the project geotechnical engineer be consulted and consideration be given to moving the dry well further from the cut slope. And this recommendation has been included as a condition of project approval. And that's to be completed prior to the issuance of building permits. And so the project engineer determined that the geotechnical report is adequate to facilitate the code compliant design of the improvements. And that additional information that I mentioned that was not included, but is required by the, the Hill Area Residential Development or HRD ordinance can, that, that missing information can be submitted and reviewed as part of the building permit submittal. So the resolution for attached 22, or 2022-17 includes a condition of approval that the location alignment of site utilities and grading and erosion control plan and a drainage calculations be provided with the building permit plans for review and approval by the town engineer. So regarding the design review permit, the, the addition of the house would change the exterior appearance of it. I mean, it's, it's a two-story addition. It's going to add some mass, but it will also add some dimension to the, the house. You know, it's been designed to complement the size and shape and scale of the home. The, the new covered entry and the overhang that are proposed would add additional articulation to the exterior. But really, the resulting house would look very similar to what's already there. Minimal lighting is proposed, you know, the four lights, they would all be dark sky, or dark sky compliant. And the, the addition where it's proposed on the house would not have a significant visual impact on the neighboring residences because there are some pretty large setbacks that it would maintain from the property lines and from other properties. And it would have a relatively small footprint in relation to the size of the site. And it's kind of been designed to be in scale of the site and other structures in the neighborhood. Minimal site disturbance is proposed, and the site would not look much different after project implementation. There are, nor, there is a, the site isn't within a radius of a northern spotted owl identified nest. So minute, condition of approval has been included that they just comply with requirements to not conduct any construction during the nesting season or find some sort of mitigation to, that would be acceptable, like hiring a biologist and all that. So we only got comments from the fire department. They weren't specific to this project. Their standard conditions have been, of approval have been included in the resolution. And similarly with the water district, the sanitary district, and the other town departments. So the recommendation is to move to approve the application number 22-13 by adopting the attached resolution. Or or continue the application to a date uncertain and direct the applicant, applicant, excuse me, to submit the items that weren't submitted for this meeting, which is the revised site plan showing the location alignment of site utilities, a grading and erosion control plan, and drainage calculations.
Thank you. Do, do any commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Green?
So that last statement you made, thank you for selecting me, Chair. The last statement you made, we still do not have then. Apparently we can't require recorded survey, but it would be good to see a survey. Location alignment of site utilities, grading and erosion control plan, and drainage calculator. We still don't have those at this moment. Is that right? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions for staff? Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. So those are things we typically would allow the neighbors to review and comment as part of the hearing process. At least the grading and drainage to me seems like something we typically want to make sure that the community is able to review is that. So we wouldn't have that if we pursued this by just having it ministerially approved, right?
Correct. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Just do, I, I don't feel like we have a lot of information for design review. I see the note, the notes on the existing images saying everything's going to match. But I don't see a sort of a proposed image of the math thing. How that the new materiality is going to be added to the new addition, et cetera. I, I can read the elevations, but those don't have material really rendered on them. Does staff feel comfortable with the amount of information that's been given with regard to the proposed material?
So, um, I think, are you sure the last letter is in there?
Yeah, we thought we had included staff's last incomplete letter to the applicants. We're checking now. So, you know, we do our best to get the, the things that are required by the code from applicants, but sometimes we aren't successful. And that's kind of what happened with this application. Yeah, that, that, our last incomplete letter is attached June 7th, June 7th, 2022. June seventh, June seventh, twenty twenty two. You want to kind of see how far we got?
What I don't understand is the hesitancy to provide, if you want to do a project, all the information that you're asked for. And bearing in mind that this is a purpose of the planning commission hearing is to bring it to a hearing so that the public has a chance to completely review the project. And I think as Commissioner Newton alluded to, they haven't had a chance to review those missing items. Neither have we. So we're supposed to be asking questions at this point. I'm sorry. We need to consider this.
Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, so of those items listed in that June seventh letter, which is on page nineteen sixty two, I I imagine some of this, I I think you've seen some of it. So it says recorded record of survey, design level grading and drainage plan, structural plans, erosion control plans and drainage calculations, a color board, window trim, roof materials, siding materials and colors, and photographs of adjacent neighboring sites, a VMP approved by Ross Valley Fire and a fee of ninety eight hundred. So which specific items of that list continue to be outstanding as of today?
So the outstanding items include the the record of survey, which we cannot ask for. Um, the design level grading and drainage plan, including the location alignment of site utilities, confirmed dry well location and site grading details, structural plans, erosion control plans and drainage calculations. So there were some materials provided. We weren't provided with a specific color board, but um, we do have the finished color and the manufacturer name and number of the proposed paint colors. And um, let's see, and we do have photographs of adjacent neighboring sites. And they do have an approved VMP and they've paid their fees.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions for staff? So this would be an opportunity for the applicant to provide any comments they would like to provide and an opportunity for the commission to ask any questions of the applicant. Push the push the mic button. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Adams. My wife Ella is here as well. We've been residents at forty three Bay Road since two thousand and eight when we moved in. I grew up in Santa fell, so been in Marin for a long time. And it's an older house and finally getting around to some things that we've wanted to do, like was mentioned in the staff report, we we enter through our kitchen. We've got two teenage daughters, so trying to create a better space to enter the house. By moving the entryway and then also our laundry is out in the the second unit or the second building. As you can imagine, trying to do laundry in the wintertime can be problematic. So a major part of the ground floor of this addition is to create a laundry room. So it's inside the house. And then upstairs, we have our bedrooms and two teenage daughters and my wife and myself basically shared one bathroom. So adding an additional bathroom there for for my personal sanity also. So and then we took into account and took a lot of thought and care and to reach out to our neighbors to find something that sort of tucks in and fits a waste and doesn't affect anybody's view or shade or sun. So with respect to the 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 incomplete part of the application, I think our architect will will discuss some of that and the reasons why, but we tried to provide everything we could to to move the project forward without engaging into really expensive work that we don't know if we were going to be able to move forward or not. So I'll let Bill take it. Any questions for me or should I wait?
Good evening. My name is Bill Engelhardt. As Matt just said, I'm the architect on the project. With regard to the items that are missing, the few items that were remaining outstanding in our application, we reviewed with the town's consulting engineer. And at that time, he agreed that they were given the small size of the project and the small size of the few things that were remaining outstanding, that it would be appropriate for those things to be left until the building permit application. We did consult with a civil engineer and provided a preliminary drainage and grading plan, which is very similar to lots of grading and drainage plans that I've seen submitted to this town before. And and our hope was that we would get the project approved this evening. And then once that was done, we would then enlist the help of that civil engineer and provide a final grant rating and change plan that would be provided during the building permit process. As Matt said, we're the goal was simply to limit the already pretty substantial time and cost investment that's gone into getting this application before you guys know. Like, as I said, I think that we've provided a fairly complete application. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have. Thank you.
Commission have any questions for the applicant or his architect? Yes.
Thank you. I'm curious about the foundation. The the extension is small, but it sits right above an steep grade with a wooden retaining wall. So what what is envisioned there? What's going to happen?
The the proposed, the expectation is to do a pier and grade beam foundation. We have already enlisted the help of a structural engineer who's begun some preliminary structural analysis on the project. And the goal would be to then do per the geotechnical report, a pier and grade beam foundation that would be bearing on the bedrock. That's only three and a half feet, I think, average below the soil. Does that answer your question?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission for the applicant?
Commissioner Kelly has his hand raised.
Sorry, I didn't see it. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. Yeah, I just very simple question. I I don't think I've ever seen a design review permit without a rendered elevation. You're you're making a brand new elevation on the street frontage. And I don't know what it looks like. I'm not sure how I evaluate it.
I'm sorry, we actually provided a rendered perspective of the project.
Isn't that the the back of the house where behind the log?
It's the it's the entry side of the house. It's where the owners went into the house.
I'd like to see what what it looks like from the street.
Sorry, I didn't actually realize that that was something that was requested of us when when we were as I recall, the the request from the planning department was for a rendered elevate for a rendered perspective, which is what we provided.
Did staff want to address that or?
We just wanted, we just wanted to point out that they they do have an elevation of the front of the building. It's the north elevation on page A five point one. I know it's not a rendering, but it's you know, the renderings were were more we try harder to get them when it's a new house. This this house, it's it's going to be painted and everything's going to match the existing house. So you'll have to decide if that's enough information for you to to feel comfortable going forward.
Commissioner Green?
Well, it's it's not a matter. So those renderings, are those the documents you received today, I believe, the seventy five pine R E E three seven, etc.?
No, that's the next item. The things you receive today are for the next item.
Oh, I see. Okay. You know, I have a problem with the the public needs to see these things before the hearing. And so those things that are missing, certainly not a recorded record of survey, but perhaps a survey might be important here. Location alignment of site utilities, grading and erosion control plan and drainage calculations all seem that they would be very pertinent to neighbors. And they all they that's the issue. What we can talk about, yes.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you know they do have a survey.
Okay.
Sheet one of one.
All right.
Yeah.
So then the other items, they're very pertinent. And that's the that's the kind of the crux of missing information. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Before I go to public comment? Thank you. I'm going to open public comment on this application. If anyone wants wishes to make a comment, come forward or raise your zoom hand.
I see no hands raised. And we have one. David Kendall?
Yeah, my name is David Kendall. I'm the the surveyor, land surveyor that provided the survey and I did want to appreciate the the staff reiterating that I'm sorry that it's dark in here. I'm on my back porch. I did want to reiterate that there was a boundary survey included and a full topographic site survey included with that submittal and the the deficiency with regard to the alignment of the utilities. I believe that that was discussed with the, you know, in detail with the with the town engineer, the consulting engineer that reviewed the plans and my determination was that all of those utilities, electric, gas and water and sewer are determined to fall on the north side of the house in between the house and the road. And it's a very short run, you know, probably thirty feet. And that all of those things were going to be determined located in detail during the the site excavation. So it was not prudent at this time to uncover all of those utilities and try to determine the precise alignment because it would come out in the wash. I don't think any neighbors would be affected by the alignment of the utility. So I don't see that as a significant barrier to the the design review. With regards to the grading concern that one of the commissioners expressed thirty cubic yards, I could, you know, I'm I'm a forty five year old man, I could probably do that in an afternoon with a wheelbarrow. So it's not, we're not talking about moving a lot of dirt here. And and like I think Mr. Engelhardt said that the the drainage preliminary drainage has been performed by a civil engineer. So I I just wanted to kind of draw attention to those things. If if you're considering those a barrier to the design review, that I don't think that's a legitimate concern at this time. And and it would be certainly addressed prior to any construction beginning, which was a a condition that the consulting engineer placed. And furthermore, with regard to the neighbors, I believe Mr. Adams did state that he has talked to all of his neighbors. I met a few of them when I was doing the survey and they were all, you know, very, very kind and welcoming. I didn't I didn't find any typical very suspicious or or defensive type of neighbors there at that time when I that I engaged with. So I just wanted to kind of make that statement that, you know, I don't I don't understand the fear of allowing this design review to move forward at this time. And be happy to answer any questions with regards to the the land and surveying aspect of the project.
And and if I could just interject, the applicants did comply with our, since it's a two story addition, they did comply with our requirement to put up story polls. So the story polls showing the neighbors, the massing of the building have been up for at least ten days. Just so you remember that fact.
Thank you. Any last questions for the applicant? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm still in public comment. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to commission discussion. Well, hold on. Commissioner Green has his hand up. Right, but we were in public comment, so.
But you you have a applicant. You don't want to close the public hearing before if he has another question for the applicant?
Commissioner Green, do you have a question for the applicant? You're muted.
I moved I moved the mute button. It used to be down in the corner. Now it's up there. Okay. Takes me several generations of software to get used to it. So I noticed on page A eleven dot one of you have a shadow survey. And I was wondering if you have any plans to install solar. Looks like both your north and south facing segments of roof would be pretty good for that. That's that's my comment, a question. Thank you.
So your question was whether they were intending to install solar, correct?
I'm learning. Yes, that will be the intent is to put solar on. We've got significant south facing roof space. So as part of this, you know, whatever new roof we need to put on, including solar at that time.
Okay, thank you. Excellent.
Okay, so I'm going to bring it back for commission discussion. And comments. Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. I I think given what we heard about the town engineers believe that the proposed project was not of a significant enough impact warrant an additional more detailed drainage and grading plan and that the preliminary plan was sufficient coupled with the fact that we don't hear any neighbors expressing any questions during public comment about the drainage issues that I would have expected them to ask if they were concerned about it. The more I think about that, the more I think I would be okay with letting the town engineer move forward with approval of a I don't know how we go, project drainage and grading plan or as graded. I don't know how that would work. But I think I would would not stand on on the failure to have more detail than what's the preliminary drainage and grading plan that the applicant referenced and the design the design review, I don't, I don't have concerns the way you do Commissioner Kelly regarding the absence of the renderings. We do have, it looks like the two almost identical renderings, although the colors appear to be slightly different. And as you noted, I think it's of the not of the side where the addition is going. But we do have photos of, you know, the property from the street that, I don't know, I think all that would suffice for my concerns about the design review elements of our decision-making. Over.
Any other commissioner comments before mine?
Yeah, it's a little unfortunate that there's some information missing, but I did notice that the property is kind of unique. It's like an island surrounded by roadway. So I think there should not be problems occurring that would affect the neighbors in any form or, or way. So to me, I think that is acceptable. And I, I don't see a problem with this project the way it is.
Okay, in looking at this from my perspective, and it may differ a little bit from the rest of the commission, but we're not only looking at a design review permit, but we're also looking at the Hill Area Residential Development Permit. So there's really two actions we're looking at. And when you look at the code, the development permit application, there's required submissions that are there for us also to, to review for the Hill Area Residential Development Permit. So I just wanted to make that comment because we also have other applications that come forward that require the Hill Area Residential Development Permit that have and do comply with all those requirements, which is again helpful for the neighbors and helpful for the commission to evaluate the Hill Area Residential Development Permit. So with that, does someone have a motion to move forward on this or wish to continue it? Looking for input here.
Well, if the if the information that we don't have here is not is not a problem because of the unique aspect of the property and the fact that all the, you know, the neighbors, as Commissioner Newton mentioned, the neighbors haven't complained. In fact, they seem to support it with a form letter, I might add, but still, they read it and they signed it. So you know, I, I'm okay if the, if the information is, becomes a, the required becomes a condition, then perhaps that's a possible idea. So that those items that drainage and those items that are required, because we, it's hard for us to make a finding in public here. You know, the public hasn't seen it. The neighbors have, but the rest of the public. So, you know, therefore required of all geotechnical, hydraulic safety and other hazards for neighboring properties. So I think that we need to say that we can make that legal finding based on a condition then that location alignment of site utilities, grading and erosion control plan and drainage calculations will be submitted forthwith to the building department and in this word language to the effect that because of the uniqueness of this property, those, those items and the approval of neighbors, that those items will, will, will be waived for the public hearing purpose. And that's, that's what I would recommend there. And otherwise, you know, I want to say generally I like the project. It's another, you know, rebuilding of an old derelict house. And it's a, it's a great idea overall. So perhaps we can make that a condition and then I can go for it. Otherwise, I kind of feel like there should be a continuance for the public to be able to see these things, but for the fact that the neighbors are kind of with it. So that's, that's my input at this point.
This might be picky, but could I ask that if, if, if someone does end up making that motion, that instead of using the term waived, do you say that those things will be deferred until the building permit stage?
Sure.
Very clear that they're being required, just they're not being waived?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
It's my understanding, there's a question for staff actually, in the reso, those conditions are set that they have to be submitted. Is that correct? Yeah.
I don't know if this will make you, so if this will make you feel a little bit better, but this is very different. It's a very unique site. It's not like your normal hillside sites where you have a hillside above that could come, you know, caving down on this house or this site might, you know, cave in on the, there's a very short slope to the street. It is surrounded, it's surrounded by streets, you know, and it's, it's just different. It's like a knoll almost. There's a little bit of upslope on the one side. So it is, it is a different site. Not that, not that I agree that people should not provide what's required in the code.
Well, it seems to me there is conditions eight, nine and 10, as pointed out by the commissioner, that they addressed that these things will be submitted. But I still think we need a whereas perhaps, or a statement, as you know, we have said that they weren't submitted at the public hearing, but that they are required and the project is conditioned on those being submitted, I guess, prior to some, some building permit issuance. Maybe that would be a good idea. So I'll float that.
So just for item number thirty-five on page seven, if you want to delete the word require in that first sentence. So does someone want to make a motion then?
Yeah, I can make a motion, considering what we just discussed and realizing that the property is unique in the way it's situated. Understanding that staff can review the deferred submittals later, I would like to make the motion to approve the reso as it is.
Is there a second?
I still would like to see some mention of that, of that language that, that was just mentioned, that a uniqueness and stuff. But because we need to make a record, I think, that why this was not submitted for the hearing here. That's the problem I'm having.
I would offer a friendly amendment to your motion, Commissioner Janson, to add, to strike the word require from the beginning of paragraph thirty-five of resolution as recommended by Vice Chair Swift, because it's just grammatically not correct. And then to add the language that Commissioner Green is talking about to the conditions. Condition number five on page three. Include the additional reference to no, I'm sorry, condition. Condition eight. Submit three copies and grading and erosion control plan, drainage calculations in the site plan, showing the location, alignment of site utilities with the building permit plans for review and approval by the town engineer in light of the unique site conditions of the proposed plans, something like that. Over. If you would accept that, I would second the motion.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
I would make one, one addition to that, and that is the words prior to the issuance of building permits, then your language, then the rest of eight.
Okay, with that, I will second it, including Commissioner Green's additional language, if that's okay, Commissioner Janson.
Yes, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Did you get that, staff?
I, I believe I did.
Okay.
Can we have a vote?
Green?
Hi.
Janson?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Acting Chair Swift?
Hi. Thank you. The reso as amended has been approved. There is a ten-day appeal process with a six hundred and fifty-dollar fee and those wishing to appeal should contact the planning department. And thank you. Does the commission want to take a break or you want to soldier on? We've got one more application. Okay, we're soldiering on then.
Oh, I was gonna say I'm always up for a break.
Do you want to take a five-minute break?
Let's take a five-minute break.
Yes, staff would like a break too.
Okay, five-minute break.
Break five.
Back at nine oh six. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Okay, we're gonna continue on with item three on our agenda. It's application twenty-two dash fourteen, construction of a single-family residence and parking, a hill area. The action is a hill area residential development, design review, tree removal, excavation and encroachment permits and parking and combined side yard setback variances for seventy-five Pine Drive. So can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, you can. This project encompasses the demolition of the existing two thousand five hundred and forty-nine square foot, three-bedroom, one-bathroom residence and parking deck, which is in a very dilapidated state and has been, you know, added on to without permits by the previous owner. It's really not in very good shape. And the applicants are proposing to construct a one thousand four hundred and seventeen square foot, two-story, two-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-family residence with an attached three-car parking deck at the street level. Construction will require the excavation of one hundred and nine cubic yards and the fill of five cubic yards of material to install the foundation, construct the house and access stairs and install the drainage system. No new landscaping is proposed as part of the project as the applicant's intention is to keep the site in its natural condition and strive to maintain the health of the existing oaks and other trees on the site. I have a few corrections to the staff report, but I'll make them after I'm finished. The project requires the approval of a hill area residential development, excavation, tree removal, design review and encroachment permits, and also a parking and combined set, combined side yard setback variances. So we'll start with the HRD permit and the excavation permit, which I discussed together, because the purpose section of the HRD permit is to encourage the maximum retention of topographic features, minimize grading of hillside areas, provide safe ingress and egress, minimize water runoff and soil erosion, prevent loss of life, minimize potential injuries and property damage and economic dislocations from geologic hazards, and to ensure that infill development on hillside sites is of a size and scale appropriate to the property and consistent with other properties in the vicinity. And the criteria for the excavation permit, the criteria that you're supposed to consider is, are very similar. They are eliminating projects that would unlawfully remove the lateral or sub adjacent, sub adjacent support of the adjacent land, result in dangerous topographic conditions, cause seepage or slides, inappropriately divert the flow of drainage waters and/or create a nuisance or otherwise endanger the health, safety or property of any person. The structure's been designed to step down the hillside, following the contour of the slope to minimize the height of the structure, while also minimizing the amount of excavation required to keep the house under the height limit. Pine Drive was built as many of the hillside roads in Fairfax by cutting the hillside and pushing the spoils onto the hillside below to level the roadway. This type of road construction means that the slope immediately below Pine Drive is fill material. The parking deck of the existing house spans over the fill material from the road construction. The road fill has settled, leading to cracking on the outer edge of Pine Drive. The proposed new construction will stabilize and support the new three-car parking deck in addition to adding support to the edge of Pine Drive. The applicant soils report indicates that bedrock was encountered during the test borings at five feet or less below grade. The report also noticed the presence of previous earth movement within the slip, swale areas that flank the northeastern and the southeastern sides of the project site. None was noted on the site itself. So the project engineer and our town engineer agrees with the following conditions. The foundation pier shall extend into bedrock and shall be designed to resist lateral pressures imposed by the soils above the bedrock. A slough catchment system shall be installed above the residence. The drainage shall be directed away from potentially unstable slopes. The proposed water catchment system shall be installed to catch water between retaining walls and cuts and fills shall be retained with engineered retaining walls. As a result of the project engineer's report identifying earth movement in the swales on either side of the site, the town engineer has required, has added the following additional condition. The dissipator has, the location of the dissipator, which on the plans is identified as being, it will be located in the field during construction. The town engineer has indicated that it shall be located on the project plans that are submitted for the building permit and that that location shall be approved by the town engineer prior to issuance of the building permit. The runoff and drainage from the hillside above Pine Drive, the roadbed, the parking deck and the house will be captured in three V ditches that will run west to east beneath the parking deck, immediately above the new house and at the rear of the new house. Additionally, a two-line system of storm drains will be installed along the east side of the residence, one that will capture surface water from the structure and the other to capture subsurface water and direct the runoff to the energy dissipation system, both, both sources of water to the dissipation system. The excavation of one hundred and nine cubic yards and fill of five cubic yards is the minimum necessary to allow the redevelopment of this steep hillside site. They're not proposing any excavated, you know, level patio areas or anything that's, the excavation is merely to get the house built. So the town engineer has reviewed a whole body of evidence. And after reviewing the project plans, he has determined that the site can be developed without geologic, hydrologic or seismic hazards and without negatively impacting neighboring private properties or the public right of way. We're now going to discuss the design review permit. The proposed residential structure facade is set twenty-eight feet from the edge of the Pine Drive roadbed below the proposed three-car parking deck. The design hugs the hillside with small portions of the structure excavated into the hill and the underfloor areas do not exceed three to six feet in height. Only a small portion of the rear southeast roof eve will reach thirty-four feet in height. So the house is well below the thirty, well, not well below, but it's below the thirty-five-foot height, height maximum that's allowed in a hillside area on a downsloping site. The structure is also well-articulated on the sides and rear. I listed all the ways it's articulated in the staff report. They've really done a nice job. There's a lot of shading and you know, different setbacks for all sides of the structure that add visual interest. The siding will be plaster painted a tan color. The doors and windows will be Milgard thermally improved dark bronze rails and casings. Milgard thermally improved dark bronze rails and casings. The roof will be general analine and film timberline ultra HD architectural shingles in a shade of gray green. The deck railings will be open guard rails in a pewter color and the roof eaves and underside side of the cantilever sunroom and underside of the parking deck will be. Wood, correct? Yes. Can't remember what kind now. I can't read. You guys have the color board up there. Can you read what it is? Because I can't read it on my photo that I put in the staff report. For the, the one in the bottom right hand corner. The type of wood? Okay, we'll let the applicant address the color then when he stands up. Okay. The area where the house is proposed is within the footprint of the existing house. It's, it's a smaller footprint, so the project will have a minimal impact on the rest of the site. Four bay trees are marked to be removed on the plans and are being removed at the direction of fire and also to improve the health of the surrounding oak trees, which has been, that's been indicated by the arborist report that removing them will actually help the oak trees get healthier and remain healthy. The proposed house square footage en masse is similar to other residential structures within the Cascade subdivision neighborhood on similar sized and sloped properties. The project does require a combined side yard setback variance. The site is within a row of several similar sized and width sites. They're only, they're only 50 feet wide. And in the hillsides, it's very hard to comply with the new combined side yard setbacks that the town put in effect in 1973. Most of the houses don't meet them. And what the applicants have done is they've designed, most of the house meets the minimum in the combined setbacks, but the entry stairway and the entry deck will, and a small portion of the living room, I think, will project into the required combined setback, but the house meets the minimum five foot setbacks on both sides, which matches the minimum five foot setbacks of the neighboring homes. So they've, they've shared the pain, you know, they've, no, no neighbor is going to see a house five feet from their property line. It's stepped back and forth, so. The proposed structure has a smaller impact on the neighboring properties and increases the side yard setbacks beyond what the existing house maintain, maintains. Therefore, the findings can be made to support the approval of the combined side yard setback variance. The project also requires a parking variance. The town code requires that each two bedroom residence be provided with two parking spaces, and then it goes on to require a third guest parking space as well. Those parking spaces are supposed to be a minimum of nine by nineteen feet in size. The project is proposing that one of the three required parking spaces be a compact parking space measuring eight feet by 16 feet per the town code. Provision of a smaller compact guest parking space on this narrow and steeply sloping site will minimize the amount of the public easement that the private development monopolizes, while also minimizing the site disturbance that would be increased by the creation of a larger third parking space. And it will also allow that, that smaller space to open up a window of light that can get into the front of the house, right, by that shorter parking space. So staff is supporting that requested parking variance. It also, the project also requires an encroachment permit. The town code allows the planning commission to grant revocable encroachment permits to any owner wishing to build a private parking or other private improvement. It's that encroach into the public right of way if the area being used, proposed for being used, proposed to be used, is not being used by the general public and if the owner has no suitable place on their own site for those improvements. On these hillside sites, it's pretty much a fact that if, when the road, when the edge of the paved road is so far away from the front property line, there's no way to build the parking without encroaching into the public right of way. And so the, we're recommending that you support the proposed encroachment permit. It's the minimum encroachment necessary to provide the three required parking spaces by the town code. The owners obtained a tree removal permit back in 2019 for four bays to come off the property. And this got a little confusing for staff because we weren't sure why the tree committee didn't make a recommendation to the commission, which is what they're supposed to do per the code. But they actually took action to approve the trees. The applicants have removed two of those trees already. And we're recommending that you also like reapprove the, the two that have not been removed. The fire department wants them out. The arborist has indicated that their removal will only improve the health of the remaining trees. So the site is also within a quarter mile of a known northern spotted owl nesting site. So construction needs to be prohibited during the northern spotted owl nesting season from February 1st through July 31st. And we've included that as a condition in the resolution. We, the commission started adding recently the additional language that reads as follow. The building prohibition period may be modified if a plan for allowing construction activities during this period is submitted by a qualified biologist and approved by the State Department of Fish and Wildlife with documentation of the approval provided to the town prior to the initiation of any construction activities. All of the requirements in the plan, including potential onsite monitoring, must be met by the applicants at all time. No other agencies had any specific conditions for this project. And so we're recommending that you approve the application twenty two dash fourteen by adopting resolution 2022 dash 18, which sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. And the corrections that I have to my staff report. In the table on page two, where I indicate the required, the permitted height, I put the height on an upslope, 28.5. That's supposed to read 35 because that's the height limit on a downslope site. On page five, I don't know how this happened. One, two, the third paragraph under the town engineer, the list of all the information the town engineer has reviewed. Number two, the site survey is by. Eric Human, and it was prepared on July 9th, 2020, not by David Nell, on July 16th, 2020. Okay, and then on page six, number two, under the structure, at the bottom, number two, it should read the living room on the second floor, not the, not the dining room. I had one in the resolution. That might be it, but let me just. And that, that was it. But I know one of the commissioners has mentioned some other corrections. So that would conclude my report. We're recommending that you approve the project.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Newton?
Okay, Jeopardy, whoever hits the button first or something. So. Should there be findings for the parking variance in the REZO? Or did I miss those?
Let me take a look at what I did. I think that I just left on page three. I, I addressed the parking and the findings for the combined side yard setback variance. So what I meant to do is combine, you know, the findings, the findings for the approval of the variances are the same. It's the steep slope and the narrow width that's generating the need for the part, the smaller parking space and for the setbacks. And I did mention that in finding one. So I think we can just add combined side yard setback and parking variance. Would that work for you?
Yeah, that would be good. I think that's it. Thanks.
Commissioner Green?
Hi, thank you, Chair. There's on page four, at the bottom, there's a mention of the project engineer recommending five things and the slow and the drainage and the water catchment. I don't notice that those are conditions anywhere in the REZO. Are they in the REZO?
They might not be specifically reiterated again, but let me check real quickly. Because they were, I did it a little bit differently here. Those were recommendations by the project engineer and the town engineer agreed with them. So when we, at the beginning, when we cite, hang on. Let me get to the resolution. On page four, at the top, we say the project is approved based on the following plans and reports, and we list that engineering report. And then we also, so that, so anything contained in that report is part of the project. And then the town engineer is supposed to review and approve this project prior to issuance of the building permit. So I believe it's covered. He, he's going to make sure that everything that the engineer, the project engineer recommended is in the plans. But if you feel better listing them, you can do that, too. We normally only list our town engineers' specified conditions in the resolution. We don't usually reiterate the soils reports' conditions. And I just did it in this one because it's kind of one of the steepest sites you guys have had in a long time, 58%. And we did have a house collapse just up the street, so.
Well, you know what I agree with.
Do whatever makes you feel more comfortable.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with you. This is a really sloppy lot. And so I would like to recommend that, well, this is question time. We'll get to it later.
Well, yeah, and it would be easy to add those under the town engineer's conditions. You know, he, he did read them and, and added an additional one. So we could do that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Newton?
Thanks again. I'm sorry. So in one of the previous. Applications, we were talking about the surveyor issues and the issues with requiring the surveys. Does that affect this application at all, too?
No, because these applicants provided us with one. I mean. That was really an unusual situation where we, the project engineer. You know, I don't know how we got to that point. You know, most applicants, they, they read the ordinance and, and they provide what we've asked for, so.
Okay, but we're going to have a town surveyor who will be able to review these.
That's right. Yep. Yeah. But you know, Ray Rosinski, you guys, some of you worked with him. He was, he was an, an older civil engineer and he was a licensed land surveyor. So people didn't question when he asked them to make changes or record the survey. But now we didn't quite realize that when we went with Miller Pacific, they do not have a surveyor on staff. So we have a geotechnical engineer, you know, reviewing the surveys and, and that is not allowed. So, which the, the applicants for 43 Bay brought to our attention.
Okay, thank you.
So I had a couple of questions for staff. The REZO, page eight, number 29, states that a sprinkler is required in the garage.
That is an error and I will remove it. Which one was that, 28?
Twenty nine on page eight.
Okay, thank you.
And then. The plans show at times. An identification that this is a house with a JDU.
Yeah.
But we're not, would that have been a prior?
That was a private, prior iteration of the plan.
Correct.
Which was removed by the applicants. And that was just an oversight that it remained in there.
Okay. And then my last, it's probably just a comment and question for staff. The driveway. Is greater than 20 feet, so needs a variance only issued by. The town council. So just to comment that this is another one of those variances. And we've had three or four projects come before us that require a variance for the width of the driveway that, you know, could be looked at something that perhaps the planning commission.
Yes.
Could address in the future. So it doesn't have to be another process.
It's in our.
That goes to the town council.
It's in our list of code changes that need to be made because it, it's kind of a carryover from before they had a zoning ordinance, you know, and it's just never been corrected.
So those are my questions. Thanks. So I'd like to invite the applicant to come. And if you have any comments you want to make on the project, come up to the podium and that gives an opportunity.
Sorry, we wanted Lori.
Right.
To, to speak first.
Oh, okay. I see you're up there. So this is Lori Pertschel. The other applicant.
Yes, Lori, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I am Turk's wife. We are co-owners and co-applicants. And this has been a four year long design process during which our thinking about both the house and the site has evolved. And I would like to just make a couple of key points that have guided our decision making process in creating the building envelope. We designed from the inside out with consideration for a multi-level interior space that mitigates the external steepness of the site. We wanted to keep a small footprint. And. We, we are proposing a house that we hope sits lightly on the land. And is multi-levels that steps down with the site. We didn't realize the qualities of the yard when we first bought the property. It was completely overgrown and my husband Turk cleared it with our daughter. And it became apparent that the yard was beautiful and also was the middle piece along with both our neighbors on either side, 69 pine and 81 pine. It was the middle piece in this mini oak woodland. So we strove to keep that in its natural unspoiled state. That's, that's all I have to say. I'll hand it over to Turk.
Thank you. What she said, no. Yeah, we did a lot of discovery on the site. And we found a lot of great small oaks that weren't apparent with the really hugely overgrown French broom that just saturated the site. And it was incredible finding. And then while there, we actually had the opportunity to study the nature of the site, the, the quality of light throughout the different time of year and time of day. It was actually pretty amazing. And that drove a lot of our locations for the windows, for the doors, for the entry. And the really big idea also was to somehow connect from the street as you walk down through the house to the site to make, make it so that you can get actually to the site rather than having to go outside and start at the parking and go down sort of like, sort of like our neighbors do. If you've been there, you'll see. But basically settling into the site as much as possible, but still kind of like not digging into the site, establishing these basic terraces inside these kind of levels that functionally work. And give privacy between parts of the house, but also connect with the stairway. And the last thing I'll say is that with the finessration, the, the view out is really incredible and the view kind of lower into the site is really amazing. But we also wanted each space to have like a connection back into the hill. Like you can see through each space from to the view and back into the hill. So it's kind of connected that way as well. Thank you.
Do any commissioners have questions for the applicants? Commissioner Janson?
I have one question. I think it's best if I ask the questions. Wonderful design, by the way. On the, so that is the. On the east elevation, there are two winds. on the east elevation, there are two windows. Basically, on the wall that's closest to the property line, they have obscured glass, as I understand. But the drawing suggests they are operable. Is that intended to be that way, or?
Yeah, the other thing we had in mind is to really establish sort of natural ventilation across the house. And those, those would do that. If, like, some of the big panes of glass are fixed, and then the smaller windows tend to be operable, and so that's for us to get natural ventilation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant from the commission? No? All right, thank you. I'm now going to open it up for public comment if anyone wishes to make a comment on this application. Now would be the time. Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Jansen?
Yes, I said before, very unique design, very well thought out. So I think what struck me as particular, well done, is how the house shifts back and forth, so it mitigates being too close to the, to the neighboring properties, while yet it has to fit in this extremely small area. I'm also, you know, it's great to see that it's actually, it's a smaller house than the neighbors. From the street, it has a very low presence. So to me, this is a wonderful project. I, I would like to approve it the way it stands. I did not find anything wrong. My only comment was curious about those two windows, but I think it's, it's well proportioned, so that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
I, thank you, Chair. I agree with Commissioner Jansen. It's a terrific project, wonderful way to renovate a house and make it safer, less slidey. I just had one question about the location of this water-captured drywell. And apparently it's recommended to consider moving it, and I was, you know, throwing that idea out. So I was wondering where, I'm looking at a drawing A2-5, A-2.5, rather, and I'm trying to figure out where that, or is that the best drawing to find these drywells, where they're located?
I'm sorry, so you, you're calling it a drywall, but there was a, there was a water retention or dispersion tank, tank on this one. There's no drywall. And, and what was going, let me, are you saying you can't find it in the plans, or?
Well, there's a drywall mentioned, and it's engineering apparently recommended moving it. If it's not there anymore, fine. You know, I don't, I don't have that comment. I, I heard, I remember reading something about it, and they.
Are you sure? There was, there was a drywall on the 43 Bay project. I don't remember. Turk, was, was there a, there's no, there's, not that, not that either the applicant or I remember. Yeah, it's a dissipator, and what the town engineer, you know, the prod, the locate, the tentative location where it was shown on the engineering plan may end up being okay, but they put a notation on their plan that said the actual location will be determined in the field during construction, and that's not going to work for the town. And the town engineer was just concerned because of the unstable soils on the neighboring properties on either side.
Right, that's.
He wants to, he wants that location to be determined prior to issuance of the building permit.
Okay, right, that's.
That's what we were.
And I think that should be a condition, if it isn't.
It is. I said, I hope I remembered to put it, to put it in there, didn't I?
That, that's it. I think the project is great. I love these renovations and these older.
It's, I think it's page eight, number 26.
Okay, great. Commissioner Kelly has a question.
Commissioner Kelly?
There's the mute button. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make a comment that the, I know the 50-foot lots are really difficult to get a comfortable building footprint within. I have, I happen to really value that combined sideyard setback requirement that we have in town. I, I wish that we put more value on that requirement. I think this project is exemplary in working almost within it. The way that the car park is pushed to one side to allow some space that they're not really filling the lot. Essentially, the car park is within that site, combined sideyard setback requirement, right? It's pushed to one side, so they have a gap. It is, I happen to know, this, this street to me is a walking street. I walk past this site on occasion, just doing town walks. And to be able to get incidental views between houses as a neighbor and pedestrian is a wonderful thing. And I think that this project actually does that by allowing that shift to happen. And then quite subtly and elegantly shifting the house in the opposite direction does the same thing with the house and offers some space between the neighbors. I think it's to be applauded. They're almost complying with that combined sideyard setback, even though it's such a difficult thing to do. It's really just the one bay that, as I see it, on the, would be west, that then croaches into that zone. So I want to applaud the applicant for essentially complying with what's a really hard requirement for our, that our, our town aspires to. And I, I support the project. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you. And I had a comment, I think there was a neighbor that submitted an email with some pictures today, and I'm familiar with Pine Drive as well, so it looks like this application will be approved and, and moved forward, which is great. Just a consideration with Pine Drive that we have the roadwork being done at the end of Pine Drive, and I'm not sure about construction and timing with that. But consideration be given to that as well as the fact that it's a, a narrow road, and we've got a, I think, a a fire pushout at the beginning of it, so consideration depending on the construction vehicles and things to manage that for Pine Drive, considering the, the concerns of neighbors and the issue at the end of Pine Drive. So just a thought on that.
We, we did include the standard condition, you know, that they submit a detailed construction management and staging plan to the Public Works Department. And luckily, our, our building official, who's also the Public Works manager, has been actively involved in inspecting the roadway repair. And so he's, he, he will have the ability to coordinate things and make sure that it has, you know, as little effect on the neighbors as it can, you know.
And just kind of a general comment as well, because in that area on Laurel Drive in the last, you know, year or so, and it may not be impacted by this application, but we've had large trucks go up Laurel from Cascade and then get stuck and block Laurel Drive, and that's a concern for the Cascade area, you know, when you think about evacuations and that.
Right. Do you know where they were going? Just a different residences delivering things or something?
One, I didn't see. One was a flatbed truck that was carrying like a 50-foot long tree above. I mean, there are, Laurel's very narrow. Most of the streets are very narrow, so just kind of airing that consideration. And I, too, like this application and would move to approve it with the deletion, as we mentioned before, of 29 on page eight, which is the fire sprinkler in the garage. So if somebody would like to make a motion. Commissioner Jansen?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-18 with the correction for the car sprinkler, for the sprinkler system in the, in the garage.
Not to make a habit of this, but I would offer a friendly amendment to reference the parking variance along with the combined sideyard setback variance, as I discussed with Planner Neil earlier. And if, and if that was acceptable, I would then second your motion.
Where, where will that be amended?
Is that on page three?
Or? It's not in the title.
No, so, so, so Newton, Commissioner Newton pointed out that normally we would have findings for the parking variance, and I did address the parking variance on page three. I believe what I intended to do, I just, in the title said combined sideyard setback variance. I wanted it, I should have said combined sideyard and parking variance.
Yes, that's correct. I forgot about that story.
So that's a motion by Commissioner Jansen and a second by Commissioner Newton. We have a.
Okay, and I'll call the roll. Okay, Jansen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Acting Chair Swift?
Aye. So the resolution is approved. There is a 10-day appeal process and a $650 fee to that, and those wishing to appeal can contact the Planning Department. Thank you. And thank you. Okay, now we're going on to approval of the minutes. And that's the minutes of May 19th, 2022. Any corrections for those? I'm sorry, Commissioner Green?
Yeah, on, on, let's see here, on page two, where it says Commissioner Green provided the following comments. I, I don't remember saying about a sunset period. I thought that was more a comment about the ability for the public to comment and to have time, timeframe for regular reviews rather than a sunset period. And I would, I, I think I might have mentioned every six months or so. That's, that's my change there.
Any other corrections? With the corrections on those minutes, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of, what was that date again? I'm sorry.
May.
May 19th?
Yeah.
2022. As, as directed.
Good second pass.
I'll call the roll. Green?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Acting Chair Swift?
Abstain, I wasn't.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Okay, then the minutes of May 26. I have a correction, page four, delete word, the word "start here." Any other changes or corrections? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Of May 26, right.
May 26.
I'll second.
I'll call the roll. Was anyone not present? Because for some reason, the minutes are not in my folder, so I don't want to call your name.
I was not.
Who was absent?
Robert Jansen.
Okay, thank you, Robert. So, Green?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Acting Chair Swift?
Aye.
Now's the time for interim planning directors' report or comments. And welcome.
Good evening, and thank you, Acting Chair Swift and members of the Town of Fairfax Planning Commission. I'd like to speak to you this evening a little bit about the, the town's state-mandated housing element update. And at this point in the process, the consultant team, EMC Planning, and staff are moving forward toward preparing that initial draft housing element for local public review, and then to go out to HCD for its 90-day review. The consultant team is asked to schedule a couple of working sessions with the Planning Commission. And they've given me a couple of dates to, to look at, to focus on, and to check in with you to see if those dates would work for you. The idea really is for working sessions to focus on a number of things. And more immediately, the idea would be to look at the objective development and design standards and look at the opportunity sites that have been identified here in the town of Fairfax and possible rezonings, and just to see what those relationships might be between the odds, sites, and possible rezonings, and to get your feedback through discussion. I've got two dates here. I'm hoping that we can, can schedule these dates, and not that you can do that necessarily this evening, but perhaps you can get back to me this coming week and let me know if you would be available to meet. And again, this would be the team, the EMC Planning Group team and staff, meeting with you to discuss topics like this. The two dates I have, first date is August 31st, and the second date I have is September 28th. They're both Wednesdays. And again, I'm not expecting that you can confirm that this evening necessarily, but I would hope that, say, early next week, you could get back to me in the, the planning office and let me know. And then I'll follow up with Andy Flower. The idea really is that as Andy and his team and town staff work with the community, we're looking really at this point, at probably late September, something like that, to prepare that initial draft housing element for release to the community for review and comment. So that, that's a target right now. And I think that this, this August 31st meeting would be a really good opportunity for the project manager, Andy Flower and his team, to kind of share with you some of the key issues that they're dealing with and get your feedback. So that, that's my report this evening. I'm extremely pleased to be here. There are a number of exciting projects going on here in Fairfax. Obviously, the housing element update is a key project, but there are many others as well. And I'm pleased to work with you and your staff, council, manager, and community to, to address these issues. Thank you.
Would that also, that review with Andy Flower include the safety element?
It, it would not focus on the safety element. There, there have been, as you know, there have been a couple of drafts of, of the safety element prepared already. The focus at that first meeting, the August 31st meeting, would be primarily, as I understand it, on the objective design and development standards. And again, as I mentioned earlier, how those would relate to opportunity sites, opportunity housing sites here in the community, and possible rezonings. How do the? and possible rezonings. How do all those work together? So that Andy mentioned to me that he and his team would be preparing for presentation graphics, some, some graphic displays to kind of engender discussion and to get your feedback. So that, that I believe would be the primary focus.
Commissioner Green?
Well, just for clarification, August 31st is a Wednesday.
Yes.
Would that mean then, kind of a question for staff, that we have our regular meeting on Thursday, the 25th, and an additional special meeting on the 31st? And then the second part of that question is, would this be a defined time meeting? In other words, will it definitely end by a certain point? And not go on like some of our meetings can go on? That's, those are the questions. Thank you.
Those are great questions. And the, the intent would be to have your regular meeting in addition to this meeting. This would be a special focused meeting. But I would speak with Andy and his team about a time limit so that there's certainty in terms of your time. And to keep it focused in terms of their presentation and to receive your feedback. But the idea really is that this is, as you know, such a key project for the community. And your agendas, as I understand it, I'm new here, obviously, often have two, three items, maybe more at times, but two or three items that can take quite a bit of time and focus. So the idea really is, is this would be, to be clear, a special, single item agenda. And I would work with Andy to come up with a time limit.
Okay, thank you. And one more request. I'm sorry to belabor this thing. So I'm not even sure I can make that meeting. But if we could get a heads up beforehand, so if we could kind of see what the issues are. Last time it was like, we broke into this discussion and it took about halfway through anyway for me to realize, you know, what kind of the issues were. It'd be great to have some preparation. I love to prepare. So if we can get a heads up or the slideshow or something, or an outline even of how these things, these elements that you're describing will relate and what the issues are that we will be needing to, to address, that would be very helpful. Thanks.
We'll do that.
Any other questions, comments?
Commissioner Kelly has his hand raised.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, actually Commissioner Green just stole my thunder on one. Just if we could get a draft of the presentation or something to help us prep to make sure that it's an effective meeting, that would be great. And second of all, what was the, I missed the second date. I got August 31st. What was the second date?
Sure. The second date is September 28th, also a Wednesday.
Thank you.
And I'll work with Andy to prepare a specific agenda and provide information to the commission in advance as to what the topics, specific topics will be and the expected outcomes or hopeful outcomes in advance.
And hopefully any read aheads so that we have something to work from before the meeting.
Sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Jansen?
Just very simple, welcome. And I'm so happy to see that we have a planning director again.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go on to Commissioner comments and requests. And I have one, but I'll go out to the rest of the commission. If there's any comments or requests, Commissioner Green?
Well, there was an interesting event. I live on Bothene Road. There was an interesting event about a month ago, a tree fell, a large 250 foot sequoia and hit the house next door and broke its roof through. Luckily, the inhabitants weren't there. My recommendation is we hire or commend, commission our town arborist to go through and if this is possible, take an inventory of trees that might be at issue. And see, because, you know, if some tree falls on a house, I've seen the damage it can do. It could kill people inside very easily. So these are issues. And this tree was very paved around and very, you know, so it's, 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 it's something the arborist gave us a lesson on way back. And I've seen it now. And I can tell you that if you're not anywhere near the forest, that tree falling will make a sound of a bomb. Okay, that's my, that's my kind of recommendation. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments, requests? Okay, so I'll go to mine. So on the June meeting that was canceled, the meeting agenda was to look at moving the B of A ATM to where the old Avatar building is. The business was, and part of the staff report mentioned that the UPS store had already been approved for that location. So I questioned why our formula business code hadn't been applied to that business coming in. And it seems from the response I got from staff was that we aren't applying the formula business code to new businesses coming in. And with no notice on that. The formula business code is, I think, much appreciated by this community. There's a history in this community of being interested in formula businesses coming in to the town or prospective formula businesses coming into the town. That code, as it was written, has the ability to, to bring in and give conditional use permits to identified formula businesses to provide services to the town. So I am asking for a discussion of the formula business code, why we aren't applying it. My understanding is that there may have been a legal case in another area that impacted our code as it's written. So I would request that we identify what that case is. And what part of that the staff is relying on to not utilize our formula business code. And the parts that may not be applicable anymore. And then a discussion of the potential of how we can change our formula business code to still be a useful tool for this community, considering whatever the reason is that we are no longer applying it. Because I think the community, that's something that the community wants in, in this town. And just to go ahead and not apply it anymore without looking at the reasons for it. We shouldn't be going down that road. So that would be my request.
Acting Chair Swift, we, we heard your comments and we will discuss your, your comments with our town manager and our town attorney and report back. Thank you.
And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All right.
I'll call a roll. Green?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Acting Chair Swift?
Aye.
Thank you.